Members, let's welcome Mr. Che Chin Wan, Secretary for Environment and Ecology as well as his colleagues for attending this meeting. This session is on food safety and environmental hygiene. As for the estimates on environment and ecology, we'll deal with them in the next session. Members who would like to speak, please press the request to speak button now. Let me first invite Secretary to give an opening speech. Secretary, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, the Environment and Ecology Bureau is committed to ensuring food safety and environmental hygiene as well as promoting the sustainable development of the local agriculture and fisheries industries. In the 2025 to 26 estimates, in the policy portfolio of environment and food, twelve point three two billion dollars is earmarked for the total recurrent expenditure, representing an increase of fifty million dollars. That's zero point four percent over the previous year and accounting for two point one percent of the government's recurrent expenditure. To improve environmental hygiene more effectively, we conducted a comprehensive review on leg- legislations and put forward amendments. In 2023, we raised the fixed penalty levels for offenses such as littering and shopfront extension to enhance the deterrent effect. In the following year, the number of fixed penalty notices issued against shopfront extension was ninety percent less than that of the same period in the previous year. In 2024, we introduced a second-stage legislative amendment to enhance enforcement effectiveness. The amendments, if passed by Legco, will take effect in Q3 this year. Departments will then be able to handle shopfront extension more efficiently and speed up investigations into public health nuisances such as water seepage, water dripping from air conditioners and garbage apartments. As regards environmental hygiene services, the F H D has actively stepped up cleansing and enforcement at about two hundred and forty hygiene black spots under its purview. The hygiene conditions of most of the black spots have been moderately improved and follow-up work will be carried out on an ongoing basis. The F H D has also enhanced its anti-rodent work using tools and methods such as new design snap traps and T-shaped bait boxes. In 2024, the F H D captured eighty-nine thousand live rodents, up one hundred and sixty-five percent as compared with 2021. In the same year, the F H D made full use of technology by adopting thermal imaging cameras and A I technologies in conducting rodent activity surveys to track rodent activities. Among the ninety locations with active rodent activities identified in 2024, nearly ninety percent of the conditions have been improved, with forty-two of them having a rodent absence rate of over ninety percent. We have also worked with different sectors to implement rodent control work. In 2024, we launched the Anti-Rodent Charter for residential buildings to bolster anti-rodent efforts. In just two and a half months, we got six hundred and seven applications, and this is very encouraging. As regards food business license, the F H D launched a series of measures. For example, we expanded the scope of the professional certification system to cover general restaurant license so that applicants may choose a license-first inspection, later approach, and obtain license fourteen days earlier. We introduced a composite permit which covers multiple restricted foods to spare shop operators the effort to apply for a separate permit for each food item. The new measure is well-received. We got a hundred and applica- we got a hundred applications received in the first quarter after the introduction of the permit. We will continue to improve the regime. In 2024, the F H D took forward the stall enhancement project and the Queen Street Cooked Food Market under the Market Modernization Program to improve the environment. The Queen Street Cooked Food Market resumed operation in September 2024, with footfall increased by about twenty percent as compared with that before the works. Stall tenants indicated that the enhancement works have improved the environment. Many people said the enhanced cooked food market offers a contemporary feel in a clean and comfortable dining environment. The F H D will identify suitable venues for similar works. Meanwhile, the F H D continues to take forward the new market projects in Tin Shui Wai, Area Sixty-seven of Chong Kuan Ho and Kootong North New Development Area. The works will be completed between end of 2027 and end of 2028. The government attaches great importance to the local agriculture and fisheries industries and is committed to promoting the modernization and sustainable development of the industries. We support the sectors in applying technology and moving towards getting opportunities from the G B A. On the fisheries front, we have designated four new fish culture zones with five hundred and ninety hectares, which is three times the total area of the existing zones. The A F C D plans to issue the first batch of marine fish culture licenses at Wong Chok Kok Hoi and Mir Spay in the middle of the year and will set up five units of modern deep-sea cages in phases for rental to fisheries associations to lower the startup cost for fishermen. Local mariculture production is expected to double by 2027 as compared to 2022. As for leisure fisheries, in January this year, the A F C D rolled out enhancement measures to facilitate the development of leisure fisheries on fish rafts. On the agriculture front, the government has reserved land in Sheng Shou for the construction of Hong Kong's first multi-story modernized and environment-friendly livestock farm by the trade. The site formation works will be completed within next year. The A F C D will shortly invite open applications for the construction and operation of the livestock farm so that interested agricultural associations may apply. The selected organization may apply for the Sustainable Agricultural Development Fund. Also, to promote the development of leisure farming, in June last year, the A F C D launched the Agri Enjoy Scheme to facilitate farms engaged in commercial agricultural production to offer leisure farming activities. As of February this year, eighty-three eligible farmers have joined the scheme. Also, the A F C D strives to, in the financial year 2025 and 26, set up a unified new brand for local agricultural and fisheries products and establish production standards, farming methods, as well as a certification and traceability system to promote local agricultural and fisheries products and enhance their brand value and competitiveness in the market. Chairman, my colleagues and I are happy to take questions from members. Thank you, Secretary.
Seventeen members have pressed the request to speak button. I will first read out the names of the first fourteen members. Please pay attention. They are: Mr. Benson Look, Mr. Gary Chan, Dr. Chow Man Kung, Mr. Perry Yu, Ms. Jovi Chen, Mr. Edward Lau, Dr. Te Kiu Yuen, Ms. Rebecca Chen, Professor Priscilla Lern, Mr. Michael Teen, Mr. Andrew Lam, Mr. Tony Che, Mr. Kitson Young, Mr. Adrian Ho. Mr. Adrian Ho is the fourteenth member. Starting from the fifteenth member, they are: Mr. Tommy Churn, Mr. Kwak Wai Kung, and Ms. Doreen Kong. I'll see if I can allow all members to speak, but please watch the time. Four members for each member, including questions and answers. Mr. Benson Look, please. I have two questions. First, on O four six, it's a question from myself. I'd like to ask about the branding of local agricultural and fisheries products. Of course, I want to see more branding support for good local products. I know that a unified brand will be built to promote the quality and safety of local products. I know that the administration has been working with different stakeholders to take forward the work. I have the following questions. I want to ask about the progress of the administration's work. Which stage are you at? I know that in year 2025 and 26, the unified brand will be rolled out. Is there a timetable? When will you promote or launch this brand? Also, with such a good brand, it will be wasteful if you only promote it locally. I know that the G B A will be a pilot point for you to promote the brand. It's hard for us to, uh, well, I mean, we can, of course, compete with the mainland products in terms of the quality, but we won't be able to compete with mainland products in terms of our price. Apart from helping to promote the local products, will you set up a fund to subsidize the local products so that they could be sold externally? For example, in the mainland. My other question concerns is zero one nine about F and B facilities at the Aberdeen Wholesale Fish Market. According to the administration, the Fisheries Organization Office, as well as other departments, are working on a study. Is there a timetable on the study that you are carrying out? When will the facilities be launched at the Aberdeen Market? Secretary, on financial support for local products as well as the Aberdeen Market? Perhaps I will defer to the A F C D to address the questions. Director, please. On the local brand, the progress is good. Under the Advisory Committee, we set up a working group on promoting the brand. We have members of the trade as well as other stakeholders sitting on the committee. Also, we have engaged certain organizations on certification as well as traceability. We have already started the discussion. We hope that by this year, or within this financial year, we'll be able to complete the work. But the progress is looking good so far. Mr. Benson Look asked about how we can help local products to be promoted to the mainland. We have the Sustainable Agricultural Fund as well as the Sustainable Fisheries Fund. We welcome fishermen and relevant associations to apply for these two funds. Now, on the Aberdeen Market, we are carrying out a study now. We hope that we will be able to complete the study within this year and will then consult stakeholders. Mr. Gary Chan. I'd like to follow up on my own question, number ten and eleven. People have been quite concerned about animal welfare in recent years. I want to ask about euthanized animals as well as the hunting of wild pigs. The number of animals euthanized have been on decline, but I noticed from the reply that, starting from 2022, there have only been fifty-four euthanized cats. And by 2024, there have been a hundred and forty. For dogs, the number of euthanized dogs have increased from two hundred and eighty to four hundred and thirty-six over the past few years. How come so many animals have to be euthanized? This is because of the wave of immigration? That's why people surrendered their animals? How come you do not encourage animal rehoming? Why euthanize the animals? In the past, there was a downward trend in terms of the number, but the number rises again over the past few years. That's my first question. Also, I understand that some people got hurt by wild pigs. According to the government, in year 2024, six hundred and fifty-seven wild pigs were euthanized, up thirty-five percent. Compared to 2022, the number rose by one point twofold. In year 2022, there were only eighteen hundred or so wild pigs. By natural waste age, there should be about just nine hundred wild pigs in 2024. In year twenty-two to year 2024, there was a drop of eighty percent of injury cases caused by wild pigs. Should we continue to adopt the same approach in euthanizing wild pigs? Or should we adopt a more humanized approach by, for example, having the wild pigs neutered instead? Also, I saw a media report today. It says that if we continue to kill wild pigs at this rate, wild pigs will be extinguished in Hong Kong. Is that correct?
Secretary, how come there is an increase in number of euthanasia cases? And what about a more humane way to treat wild pigs? Let me defer to the director. The established approach is, when we have received stray cats and dogs, we will try to rehome them. It's only under two circumstances when we are unable to rehome them. First, health reasons. Perhaps the dogs and cats suffer from health issues. The second one is behavior. We give them training, but even with training, if they are unsuitable for rehoming, then they'll be put down. As the reason of the increase in numbers, last year, we have received more abandoned cats and dogs. We found that the cats and dogs we have received suffer from health issues. Sometimes, when their pets become ill, the owners do not want to keep them. In addition, we have seized a number of smuggled small animals, including dogs and cats. Their health are quite poor when they arrive at our centers. Our vets have conducted assessments. For animal welfare reasons, a decision to put them down was made. But still, if we can rehome the cats and dogs, we will do so. Wild pigs. We hunt, we hunt them, catch them, and put them down. A few years ago, we used a way of neutering them. At that time, there was a huge increase in their population. In 2022, there were about thirty cases of injuries from wild pig attacks. We want to ensure safety. We want to address the issue. So we, when we catch them, we put them down. That's an improvement in the past two years. By 2024, the number of cases was only seven. We monitor the population of wild pigs. Last year, we found that there were only about several hundreds of them. We'll monitor to see if the situation changes in the coming, in this year and next year. We may change our approach, but safety comes first. That's why we need to remove them to address the issue. Next, Mr. Chow Man Kung.
Thank you. I would like to follow up on a question asked by Mr. Stephen Ho, zero two four, in relation to the operations of the Fisheries and Agricultural Funds. In 2022, I remember there was a funding approval of increase of both funds by ten, by one billion dollars. I want to know about the uncommitted balance of the two funds. We've been following up on the situation of the two funds. For the Sustainable Fisheries Development Fund, they have seen an increase by three times in number of applications, with the num- with the amount of application increased by about eight times. That's just over one year. It seems that you have taken on board our views and expedited the process. For the other fund, number of applications stood at about sixty-five. The amount approved was about twenty million dollars. It's the second highest. With the support of the two development funds, fisheries and agricultural industries in Hong Kong will see an improvement. Well, apart from improving the production equipment of practitioners, can funds be set aside to enhance publicity of local products? Say, for example, establishing an online publicity platform, marketing platform, a system to tap into the mainland market so that fisheries and agricultural industries can upgrade and transform? Questions about the two development funds as well as assistance on publicity? I'll defer to the director. The first question is about the balance. For the Fisheries Development Fund, it stands at about eight hundred million. For Agricultural Development Fund, it's about seven hundred million. There is sufficient balance to support various initiatives in the blueprint. Mr. Chow asks whether the fund can be used on publicity and marketing. That's exactly the objective of the funds. We would like to make use of the fund to provide financial support for the industry to promote and market their brands. Applications have been made to do something similar under the two funds. With the unified new brand, I believe that, um, the fund will support the promotion of the, of the new brand. Next, Mr. Perry Yu.
I would like to follow up on a question by Mr. Chen Hang Pan, zero one four. I thank the director of the A F C D. He went with us to Lama Island to visit some leisure fishing operators. We were given a, a tour of fish rafts. We went fishing. We were really taken in. We caught up sea bass. But regrettably, we can't have it cooked in a nearby restaurant to eat it. I remember there was a case that the director was the chef of cooking a fish that is famous in, um, Yunnan Long. Well, that is the experience that a lot of people are going after. In the reply from the administration, it said that, um, well, they, they are looking into the possibility of allowing multiple uses of fishing vessels. In January, there was a relaxation of sale of food, but it's limited to prepackaged, pre-made food as well as drinks. The fish I mentioned previously was mammoth. I hope that the administration will expedite the relaxations so that people can eat, uh, the fish ra- fish rafts. It will be a brilliant experience. It's mentioned in the Tourism Blueprint two point oh that the E E B will look into an initiative, that is, to introduce leisure fishing in Sha Tao Kok. Any concrete plans, any timetable for this year? We do look forward to it. If we can revitalize the fish rafts off the pier and allow leisure fishery there, I'm sure it will be a great impetus to development of businesses in Sha Tao Kok. Will you work with the C S T B to promote this special activity? A number of questions were asked. Who is to answer? Director? I thank a member for his strong support of leisure fishery. We would like to do more. We have relaxed certain restrictions in January. Regarding provision of food, is there something more we can do? We'll look into it. I understand that there are a lot of tourism elements in Sha Tao Kok. We've been working with the Culture, Tourism and Sports Bureau. We have to take into account the management of closed frontier area. We understand that there are operators interested in running leisure fishery activities. We'll work with C S T B to take forward relevant initiatives. Next, Mr. Jovi Chen.
I would like to, uh, follow up on zero seventy-two. It's about expenditure on publicity, standing at forty million dollars. I asked for effectiveness, but I'm not given any figures. I would like to know about the number of views, number of likes, and the coverage or penetration rate. Can I be given some figures so that I can gauge the effectiveness? The other one is in relation to the, um, performance of the Joint Office. It's replied zero seven five. I understand that, that there has been an increasing number of cases received by the Joint Office. The manpower, however, stays the same. In the past three years, they have maintained the same level of manpower, but there is an increase in staffing emolum- emolumen by about a four to six million dollars. Why? We have conducted a survey on the work performance of the Joint Office. In general, respondents are not happy about it. We asked this office to make good use of technology. Currently, thirty-four percent of the cases are not handled satisfactorily. We hope that the case will be resolved in nine, within ninety days. More often than not, staff member, um, members of the public will have to find a notary to handle the case. The Joint Office did not, could not help them. I asked the administration not to be calcified. Don't handle cases if it's below thirty-five percent moisture.
Well, other than measuring the, taking measurements during office hours, will they consider taking measurements when it's the peak hours of water usage? I would defer to the director of Food and Environmental Hygiene. A member asked about hit rate of different social media. In the Facebook, in 2024, we have fifty-one thousand followers. Compared to the previous year, that is, twenty twenty-three, there is an increase about seven point two percent. The Facebook of the Center for Food Safety is a platform where we disseminate information. The number of followers has seen a significant increase by over ten percent. Instagram, um, we have seen an increase in number of followers by fifteen percent. We've been monitoring the use of our social media. We have the Clean, Cleanliness Ambassador, R T A C. We are going to launch another dedicated page. R T A C will publish, publicize on cleanliness and hygiene. We will have a different dedicated page covering other areas. Well, that is the answer to publicity. A member also asked about the work performance of the Joint Office. There is no significant increase in manpower. In the past two years, we have seen salary adjustments in accordance with the established mechanism of civil service pay. That's hence the increase. We handle water seepage by three stages. We want, we want to ensure that we, the measurement is over thirty-five percent during the first stage. There are reasons. If the, uh, moisture level is below thirty-five, based on our experience, it is very remote a chance for us to find the source of the water seepage in this case. That's why we need to set a threshold. So we only handle cases with a basic moisture content level of over thirty-five percent. Next, Mr. Kenneth Lau, Edward Lau.
I would like to ask about six, eight, nine, ten. First, zero zero six. In relation to the multi-level, multi-story environmentally friendly enclosed building for livestock farming, I'd like to share with you my view. In Hong Shui Kyu as well as Yunnan South, tend to exercise for making tender exercise for making use of multi-story buildings for various industries have been postponed because of a high construction cost. The purpose was for logistics. Well, given the fact that even for the logistics industry, it does, it didn't work. Do you think that it will work for livestock farming? What is your approach? Will the government take the lead? To start the tender exercise and for operators to run the business at their own cost? This, the upfront cost will be quite hefty. The next question is about animal management as well as cruelty to animals. In a lot of the new development, new development areas in Anti-North, there, there is land acquisition as well as resettlement. Residents will receive excitation payment. When it comes to animals, there is no proper resettlement plan. For pets, they are, they'll be lucky if they can, if they can go with their owners um to live in a public housing estate. But for animals that live in, say, brownfield sites, they will not know where they're going to stay in the future with land clearance. So other than animal management centers, will there be a, will there be a home for animals that have been displaced because of land clearance? This will be a home for the animals and they will be taken um care of properly. Secretary. I defer to the director of um Agriculture and Fisheries Conservation. First, in relation to the multi-story building for livestock farming, the current plan is that when site formation works complete, the site will be given to the AFCD. We will start the tender exercise to identify the suitable operator. The operators may be um organizations from this sector. We have been liaising with various parties or individuals. They have shown some interest. We have visited the mainland to uh look at multi-story livestock farming, say Pixdy. We've visited more than one such sites. We have conducted some assessment and found that, well, commercially is viable. The multi-story livestock farming will be constructed by uh one party, but will make use of the um Sustainable Agricultural Fund to support the project. Animals displaced by land acquisition or clearance in Anti-North. We have made plans early. The AFCD have gone to Anti-North to talk to stakeholders. The discussion covers arrangements for stray animals, cats and dogs. Some will go to animal welfare organizations for rehoming. I understand that there are three such organizations that have applied to the government for land to build animal shelters. Two of the organizations have started the operation of these shelters. The remaining one will be commissioned later this year. I believe that most of the animals displaced as a result of development will be taken care of by these um animal welfare organizations. Next is Mister Tikchi Yun.
My first question is oh five three about waste charging. I think the waste charging scheme is a good measure. It is the right direction to take. But because of lack of preparation, the government suspended the scheme in May twenty twenty-four. I hoped the government will be better prepared. It's been a year since May twenty twenty-four. Over the past year, what did the government do to prepare for the launch of the scheme? The government said by the middle of this year, it will report to Legco about its work. Could you tell us now what the government did over the past year? And are you confident that the waste charging scheme will be launched this year? Now, I want to turn to the import of Japanese aquatic products. This year, the mainland has gradually relaxed the requirement for importing Japanese aquatic products. But some of the products from high-risk areas are still being banned. Does the government have any new thoughts? Will you gradually relax the requirement or ban on the imported aquatic products from Japan? Secretary. On waste charging, I will wait until the next session to address the question. How about aquatic products from Japan?
Japan has been discharging nuclear contaminated water to the sea. We strongly disapprove this act. In Hong Kong, we need to implement precautionary measures to safeguard food safety. Products from ten metropolis and prefectures in Japan are banned to be imported. We need certain proof on the radiation level of the products before they are imported to Hong Kong. The Japanese government agreed recently to a monetary mechanism under the I A E A framework. Relevant countries, including our own country, can collect samples for testing. We'll see and look at the progress of the independent testing to decide whether there's room for us to relax the ban. Thank you. Next, Miss Rebecca Chan.
I support the development of local agricultural industry as well as local farms and so on. But this question has been asked, so I will turn to oh five six. The F E H D is managing ninety public markets of different sizes. You have spent one point one billion dollars on the public markets. It is the government's duty to manage these public markets. We've asked the government a number of times about the vacancy rate. Now I want to ask about how many tenants quit renting these stalls in public markets. The one on Java Road in North Point, the rate is fourteen percent. In Chuen One, it's thirteen point two percent. On Po On Road, it's as high as seven point five percent. Have you looked at the surrender rate? Have you looked at the reasons why people stop renting the market stalls? I've not looked at the Aberdeen Market, for example, that is the refurbished market. We want to refurbish public markets to improve the operating environment. Other than this, what measures the government is putting in place to enhance the public markets? Can you make better use of the vacant spaces? We have nineteen public markets where there is a system in place to study the footfall. Is there a better system in place to monitor the public markets so that more support can be offered to tenants on vacancy rate and surrender rate and so on? Secretary, please. I'll defer to the director of Food and Environmental Hygiene. On occupancy rate and surrender rate, we actually addressed the questions in our major reply. People are concerned whether there will be more and more people surrendering the stalls. Well, the surrender rate dropped last year, but uh so we don't see a major wave of people surrendering their tenancy. As to how we can increase the tenancy as well as improve the environment, for example, we've been launching publicity campaigns and activities so that tenants can also help promote the market and we can attract footfall to the public markets. The problem is that in older markets or in meat stalls or vegetable stalls nearby, they are creating competition. So we're seeing a drop in footfall to public markets. So we hope that through publicity campaigns, we'll be able to promote the public markets better. In terms of monitoring the footfall to public markets, currently in ninety-six public markets, nineteen of them see a surveillance and monitoring system. This helps us look at the utilization rate of public markets and how many uh businesses these markets get. We will apply the nineteen systems to different ma- public markets so that we have a better idea on the footfall to the public markets. Professor Priscilla Lo, thank you.
I have two questions. In paragraph nine of the secretary's opening remarks, it is mentioned that there is the Sustainable Fisheries Development Fund and that the government has been promoting the Agri Enjoy Scheme. Mister Stephen Ho, as well as other Legco members, visited recently a fish raft in Sokkuan. It was a two-hour visit. It was a very nice visit. We felt that we had left Hong Kong. The only disappointing part is that there was no food. This is a similar problem we see in terms of promoting nighttime economy. How can you integrate food promotion to, with tourism?
We want to be able to enjoy fish, uh food in the fish raft. There are prepackaged beverages, for example, but the government should further relax the restrictions. Our country wants us to promote our tourism. We can make our agricultural and fisheries sites as a tourism attractions. That's my first point. I hope the secretary can think about how the government can relax the relevant restrictions.
Now I want to follow up on zero four five, a question from Mister Ben Chen. It's mentioned here that in year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, eight hundred and seventy million dollars were spent on anti-rodent work. And this year, eight hundred and fifty-seven million will be spent. Is the money being spent effectively? Have you thought about inviting or learning from the practices in the mainland? Leisure fisheries as well as uh rodent infestation. Perhaps the secretary can focus more on the problem of rodent infestation. On rodent problem, I'll ask the F E H D to address the questions. Now, leisure fisheries, we have to remove the relevant barriers and we do see the benefits of it, so we will work on it. F E H D on rodent problems. The number of life and dead rodents we caught have been on the rise, but we don't look at the figures only. We look at the rodent absence rate in different districts. If you look at the latest figures compared to this, comparing the first half and second half of last year for areas with rodent infestation, we see that the R A R has improved. So we have been keeping in view on the effectiveness of our work. In terms of exchanging with mainland experts, apart from talking to local experts, we've also talked to the experts in the mainland in terms of uh rodent prevention. Not just talking about having exchanges with mainland experts. We've been talking about importing labor. I think the cost-effectiveness of our measures compared with those in the mainland is very different. If the practice is effective, then you won't have to spend eight hundred million dollars on anti-rodent work. Next, Mister Michael Teen.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on zero five three about construction waste. There's something I would like to share with the secretary. In mid-March, I passed by a very nice-looking refuse collection point. On the idle site next to the collection point, I saw bags of garbage piling up. I called one eight two three and they asked me what the bags contained. I didn't open the bags, but I believe they contained construction waste. Six days went by and no one picked up the bags. No one from one eight two three or the E P D dealt with it. This is unacceptable. Outsource workers from the F E H D, they go to the refuse collection point to collect garbage every day. They have to notify their supervisors and the cases will be referred to the E P D or the lands department if they have to report about the bags of construction waste. Well, these are just garbage, right? Why do you have such a clear division of work among different departments? And with such a division of work, how can you avoid miscommunication? Each department is responsible for different district. Have you thought about how to save money? Well, by judging from the appearance of the bags, I guess that they are construction wastes, but it could be something else. The F E H D doesn't accept or collect construction waste. If it is unknown what these bags contain, what should the frontline staff do? Should they open the bags and check what they are first? Or is it the case that if the construction wastes are dumped outside of the refuse collection point, the F E H D staff won't handle them? Secretary, please. I will invite the F E H D to address the questions.
There are two types of waste. Construction waste is one. There is a collaborative mechanism with other departments in place. Construction waste will be handled by the uh E P D. They will contact the transp- uh they will contact the high-waste department. They will contact the trans- uh they will contact the high-waste department to have it cleared. Domestic waste is the FEHD. If there is a bag of rubbish, of course, whatever it is, construction waste or not, it should be cleared right away. If there is a bag of rubbish outside the refuse collection center, the contractor will uh contact relevant parties. The EPD will follow up. How come in this case, it's been six days, no one did anything? In a case cited, we do think that the relevant parties have not done what they're supposed to do, that is to handle the construction waste outside the refuse collection center. What about one-eight-two-three? Please continue.
When the department is made aware of the situation, we have swiftly dealt with the bag of rubbish. We've checked to see if our department or one-eight-two-three has received a complaint. We may not be able to find the record swiftly. But still, we aim to clear the back of rubbish outside the refuse collection center as soon as possible.
Next, Mister Andrew Lam.
It's a question of mine. One hundred. Establishment. Establishment of the FEHD. I thank the administration for the detailed reply. In the past three years, from executive officer to workman two, there's been a reduction by a hundred and sixty-nine headcounts. The largest cut came from workman two and workman one as well. The reduction in manpower, how much is a result of outsourcing of your work? How much of the reduction is from the use of technology? The second question. Will the trend of reduction be sustained in the coming year? Do you have any goal?
Secretary, I will defer to the director. We have made deletions of different grades. They're done for different reasons. One is the use of technology, streamlining of work process. We have made savings from these. There's two. The percentage of the reduction from streaming, streamlining of work process or use of AI, we don't have a breakdown. But in any event, they have helped us reduce manpower requirements. We need to reach a target of two percent reduction in the coming two years. We're looking at a wider use of technology, process, re-engineering in different areas in order to streamline manpower. Say, for example, rodent control. We will see whether the use of thermal imaging camera and the um rodent absent rate, whether we will be able to reduce manpower requirement. I will also ask you to give me a breakdown of contractor. Well, actually, you have already given me the information in your reply. As I said, that most of the posts deleted are from elementary posts. Is it the case that you have reduced civil service post and give the work to contractors? Is that your policy? Is it the director again? We have outsourced last-scale work portfolios. Say, for example, collection of refuse as well as a street cleaning. In the past two or three years, there isn't much change in the percentage of outsourced work. It's not the case that we reduce civil service um posts and give the work to outsourced contractors.
Mister Tony J. First, I would like to follow up on zero-two-two. That is Agri and Joy. It's a very good initiative. I strongly support it. It's making very good use of what we have in the agricultural sector. I support diversification of the industry. This will bring economic benefits. I thank the government for providing support. Eighty-three applications have been approved, eighty-three farms since it was launched in June last year. It's mentioned in the reply that the AFCD makes use of the Sustainable um Fisheries Development Fund to provide financial support. Can you give me information about the criteria for the use of the fund? As well as details of financial support provided? Another question is a follow-up on one-three-zero in relation to the Joint Office of Water Seepage. You have given us some figures from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four, the number of cases received and the number of cases processed. Is it always the case that there is a backlog of cases outstanding? As a result, the number of cases in the backlog will continue to climb. As at the thirty-first of October twenty-twenty-four, the number of outstanding cases stands at ten thousand six hundred and fifty-three. I would like to get more information. What measures have the government put in place to expedite the handling of these cases?
So you have asked uh questions about support under Agri and Joy as well as the Joint Office. For the first part, I'll defer to the Director of Agriculture and Fisheries Conservation. The Sustainable Fund supports Agri and Joy in two ways. There is one relating to farming equipment improvement. Every farmer will receive a maximum of fifty thousand dollars to enhance the sustainability of their operation. That includes enhancing facilities under the Agri and Joy scheme. They will have to put in place a basic facility, say, for example, um washing basins to provide the services. If publicity and marketing is needed under the Agri and Joy scheme, operators can make applications to the fund for this use. Will we now hear from the Director of Food and Environmental Hygiene?
Starting from twenty-twenty, we have been receiving an increasing number of cases, new cases, from twenty-twenty, thirty-nine thousand to twenty-twenty-four, forty-seven thousand. So there is a significant increase as to how we can expedite the processing of cases. We're working in two different aspects. Our investigation covers a three stages. We want to carry out um stages two and three in tandem. In the past, we do it step by step, but now we carry out stages two and three at the same time. We hope that we will be able to compress the entire process. We'll also enhance the use of technology. Say, in stage three, we use the we use a technology. The Buildings Department will enhance the use of technologies to identify the source of water seepage. That is the thermography, infrared thermography, as well as the microwave tomography. What about effectiveness? As I said, that we will carry out stages two and three in tandem and will also make use of infrared thermography as well as microwave tomography. We'll have to wait to see how effective they are.
Next, Mister Kitson Yu. I would like to ask about one-two-three and one-two-nine. They are from me. One-two-three is rodent control. First, a compliment to the department. The situation has markedly improved, so the measures you put in place are effective. Well, you have in twenty-twenty-four caught about eighty-nine thousand live rodents compared to sixty-three thousand uh in previous years. There's an increase about twenty percent. You spent about twelve million on thermal imaging. For T-shaped box is one point three for a one hundred and thirty million and for alcohol mouse trap, uh rodent trap is one point seven million dollars. It seems that the current methods are very effective. By comparison, previous ones were not. In the past, you used poisonous bait as well as cages or traps. They seem to be not very effective. Would you phase them out so so as to save money? The other follow-up is one-two-nine, vacancy rate in public markets. Well, I see there is a difference between those with air conditioning and those without. For vacancy rate in air-conditioned places, the vacancy rate is lower. Under the Market Modernization Project, will you upgrade on air-conditioned public markets to improve the vacancy rate? Well, I see that, well, um, there is, there are, there is a range of vacancy rate from fifty percent to seven percent at various locations. These are on air-conditioned markets. Will you make adjustments of the use of funds? I read from the press that some market stores have been used as courier centers. Will you allow new users to enhance occupancy rate? Question on rodent control, I think it's already been covered. The other one is vacancy rate in public markets. Who is to take the question?
Director of Food and Environmental Hygiene, please. On rodent problem, as mentioned, we have been making use of the rodent absence rate and we also have been using thermal technologies for our analysis. This helps us deploy manpower. For locations with high RAR, we don't have to deploy so much manpower. For places with low RAR, we can focus our manpower on those places. We make use of different methods. For example, we use the T-shaped bait boxes. Compared with the conventional baits, these T-shaped boxes are more effective. We spent about eight hundred and fifty million dollars on anti-rodent work. This is not just for rodent infestation. It's also for mosquito problems. How about vacancy rate in public markets? As mentioned, through publicity work, we will do more to improve the footfall. As for whether there will be alcohol works or large-scale refurbishment works, well, we've been implementing these types of works. For example, the one on Queen Street, there have been refurbishment works. And after the refurbishment works, we see improvement in footfall. In considering what kinds of public markets are suitable for refurbishment, we will look at, for example, the footfall as well as the level of businesses. Mister Yang asked whether we will look at the markets with and without air conditioning. Yes, we will take that into account. Next, Mister Adrian Ho. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on one-one-six. It's a question from Mister Bill Tang. According to the government, the FEHD will consider closing or consolidating public markets with low utilization rate so that these sites could be vacated for other purpose for other departments. Are there plans for the government to convert the site for other purposes? What will be the purposes? How will the government avoid a low utilization rate even after the conversion of the site? It has to do with the vacancy rate of public markets. So how do you assess when to convert these public markets? Director, please. For some public markets, we see a very undesirable footfall. We will consider consolidating these markets. We will consider closing these markets after we have confirmed a purpose for these markets. Even without a long-term purpose, say, we see a public market with a low footfall and it is creating a financial pressure for the government, then we will consider consolidating these markets. People are concerned about the short-term and long-term purposes of the closed public markets. Before closing or after closing public markets, we will invite different government departments to think about how these sites could be used. Say, we see a low footfall, we will consider consolidating the markets. We have a mechanism in place and we will, in accordance with the mechanism, invite different government departments to think about how to use these markets for different short-term and long-term purposes. Mister Tommy Jun. I'd like to follow up on zero-eight-three. It's my question about a longstanding issue. In the nineteen nineties, back then, I, together with other ethical members, asked for pilot points in Saikong and Stanley for outdoor for outside seating. You have to consult all government departments before launching these outside seating accommodations. You have to consult all government departments before launching these outside seating accommodations. And you get complaints too. According to your reply, in years twenty twenty two, twenty three and twenty four, you got seventy three, thirty seven and ninety three applications respectively. And the numbers are better in twenty twenty four. And it takes nineteen to twenty three months to process these applications. I once got an objection from the police. The reason is that there will be cars parked outside the outside seating accommodation and it will cause congestion. I asked whether the police noticed that there were double yellow lines. And even with the outside seating, no cars could be parked and so the police withdrew the objection. I've been supporting the work of the current term government. We all try to improve the business environment in Hong Kong. For example, we try to promote the silver economy. With outside seating approved, perhaps it can help boost the businesses of restaurants. I don't need the director to answer my questions. But I do want the secretary to tell me, will you be bold enough to reform the application procedure? Will you not reject the application just because of one or two complaints? For example, I told the police officers about the double yellow lines and they withdrew the objection. Is it that difficult to allow people to place one or two tables outside their restaurants? Secretary, it doesn't matter if you cannot answer this question today. Well, I ask the same question every year and I feel very frustrated because I don't see any results from the government over the years. Twenty thousand restaurants we have and we are talking about sixteen thousand seatings. And every year we have so few applications approved. Secretary. I thank Mister Tommy Jung for the question. We try to relax the restrictions and this is one of the goals of the current term government. That's why you see an increase in terms of the number of applications. It's difficult to not consult any government departments because we do encounter problems. Perhaps we can analyze further what kind of problems the applicants face and then we can see how the government can do more so that we can help restaurants increase outside seatings. Perhaps the government can be bolder, just like what Mister Jung said. Next, Miss Doreen Kong. I'd like to follow up on O nine two first. Head forty nine, program three. In year twenty twenty three, two point three billion was spent and in year twenty twenty four, two point four billion dollars were spent on hawker problems. So a lot of stall operators aren't willing to move into markets and the Central Street Market is a good example. How come money spent on public markets are on the rise? Among the twenty billion dollar spend, how many are spent on managing itinerant hawkers? According to the government, there are just about two hundred itinerant hawkers now in Hong Kong. The actual number might be smaller. If you spent so many resources on managing itinerant hawkers, is it worth it because we have so few of them in Hong Kong? Now on hawkers black spots. According to your reply, you mentioned that there are hawker black spots in Hong Kong. Do you publicize the information about hawker black spots regularly? If you don't, how will hawkers know that they won't be able to operate their businesses at those spots? Now on one, three, oh. I see that starting from year twenty twenty, the number of water seepage cases you got have been on the rise from thirty nine thousand to about forty seven thousand from year twenty twenty two to twenty four. But the number of prosecutions are on decline. In year twenty twenty five, are you confident that the Joint Office will improve in terms of tackling water seepage? Well, there were a few questions about water seepage already and the other question is about itinerant hawkers and public markets. I will defer to F E H D about the hawker problems. Now on water seepage, as mentioned, we have already improved our work. We hope to compress the time needed for tackling water seepage. We also want to make use of technology. But we are not complacent with the improvement we've seen. We've been exploring with other departments to see how we can improve efficiency and effectiveness. If there are any new plans, we will consult members of this council. On management of itinerant hawkers at a public market. On hawker black spots, we have actually uploaded the information onto our website, so there is information about that. Over the past few years, the vacancy rate as well as the tendency has been decreasing. Say, there are public markets with low footfall, low utilization rate and people are switching to street stalls. We will take actions, for example, the Central Street Market is an example. We will consult district stakeholders and we do have plans to close the Central Street Market. Next, Mister Kwai Kung. I'd like to follow up on my own question, number O nine five. About itinerant hawkers and hawker pitches as well as enforcement actions. Be it fixed pitch hawkers or itinerant hawkers, the numbers are on decline. The number of vacant hawker pitches have been increasing, but the number of itinerant hawkers are decreasing. There are statistics about unlicensed hawkers. There is an estimated number. Do you have this estimated number based on the number of fixed penalty tickets issued? Say for white licensed cars, the government deal with the problems by regulating ride hailing apps. For gambling, the government is now thinking about making the betting of basketball legal. So in this case, we see that there is a need for itinerant hawkers. Will you consider issuing licenses to itinerant hawkers? There are some unlicensed itinerant hawkers and will you consider issuing licenses to them for operating small businesses before they can expand the scale of their businesses? Also, are there any support measures for hawkers? Hawkers is part of our economy. I don't think people want to eliminate hawkers entirely, so do you have any support measures for them?
Question about hawker licensing, who is to take the question? Answer first before I defer to the Director of Food Environmental Hygiene. Hawker issues is a complicated matter. We have to take into account different considerations and try to strike a balance. We receive complaints because hawkers pose hygiene issues, food safety issues, as well as nuisance. We need to take a number of factors into account. When it comes to licensing hawkers, we try to work on relaxing conditions. It's very difficult to come up with a policy to say with certainty that at this location, we're going to issue this number of hawker licenses. We'll try to provide assistance to hawkers in a suitable way, Director. I'll first answer the question relating to estimated number of unlicensed hawkers. We've done a survey. It's a scientific way to estimate the number of unlicensed hawkers. I think we'll hear from the last member of this session, Mister Tan Kapiu. I've asked a number of questions. First one is one, one, six. It's in relation to closure and development of public markets. You gave us information about markets closed in the past five years. How many more will be closed in the future? Say for example, Yon Street Market in Kun Tong. According to local residents, is seriously underutilized. Can you share your plan with us? If you have a plan to close more markets, how much will be saved? Another question, one, one, seven is street obstruction. Well, there is a task force on district governance. I understand that there is an improvement in the situation in twenty twenty two, five thousand eight hundred, twenty twenty four, one thousand two hundred. Is it the case that your measures are effective? That's why fewer people break the law, hence fewer prosecution figures. Well, um, is there a reduction in administrative costs as a result? Next question, one, one, eight, rodent problem. Twenty twenty two, you've caught forty five thousand live rodent. In twenty twenty four, or the figure that was twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four, you've caught eighty nine thousand, double that of previous years. Is it because your measures are effective or there is a higher population of rodents? In twenty twenty three, sixty thousand. It seems that the more you catch, the more there are. Is it going to be a linear increase or is it going to be a curve that after reaching the peak, the number will drop? So a number of questions have been asked. The question on rodent control has been answered a number of times. Well, I'll first answer rodent control. We have used new ways to catch rodents. We've used new technology to assess the infestation rate. We have more accurate figures to gauge the situation compared to what we did in the past. That's why rodent problem has improved greatly. On top of that, our measures to catch rodents are more, are effective. We want to keep improving the effectiveness of these measures. We hope that at one point, the number of rodent caught will drop. Well, figures tell us that the situation is improving. Street obstruction and public market, are we going to hear from the director?
Yes.
We have answered questions relating to public markets. Some have been closed. We will monitor underutilized markets. Those with a higher vacancy rate, we will consider consolidation. Central Street Market is one, we may consider closing it. Yon Street Public Market, it has a very low utilization rate, we will consider it. Street obstruction. Number of complaints as well as the number of prosecutions have both dropped significantly. However, we will not relax our enforcement intensity. We want to keep up with that work. Members who have pressed the button have spoken. That's the end of this session. The next one will start at five forty five. Thank you very much.